Welcome everybody to this evening to our city council meeting. Tonight's invocation will be given by Pete Corrine, New Life Church, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Father God, we thank you for this opportunity we have as a community to come together and to take care of the affairs of this city. We thank you, Father, for each individual has taken it upon them to serve in any capacity, Father God, in leadership over the town of Kingsburg. We ask your blessing over them tonight. We especially, Father, lift up Israel today, Lord, that country, Father God, that is such a great ally of ours. And we ask, Father God, for the peace of Jerusalem, peace of that region. We ask you, Father God, to undertake for them, just as you would undertake for us today. Father, undertake for us and help us as a city to be a shining light in this county, Lord, and in this state. Father, keep us safe and secure and watch over all our people. This we pray in your precious name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pete. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Wednesday, November 1st. Abby, could you please take roll call?
Councilmember Sullivan?
Present.
Councilmember Chris Seligman?
Here.
Councilmember North?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Mayor Palmar?
Here. Next, we need to approve the agenda. Asked by council to approve the agenda or to make modifications. Items that can be added to the agenda is constrained by state law. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Motion is passed. Next, on our agenda, we have presentations. Swearing in badge pinning and police department employees. Brandon Patavik, police officer. Yvonne Reese, police officer. Braden, I'm sorry, Brayden, yes, Brayden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, good evening, members of council. Always a pleasure to be with you, especially when we get to do a presentation of new employees. Always positive for us and I'm pretty sure the council enjoys it as well. So, let me call up Officer Brayden Patavik. Officer Brayden Patavik was born and raised in Fresno and graduated from McLean High School. After completing high school, Brayden enlisted in the United States Marine Corps. After his military service, Brayden began his journey towards law enforcement by working private security for approximately six years and gaining relevant job experience, including working for community medical centers. Brayden attended the Tulare Kings Police Academy at the College of the Sequoias where he graduated third in his class. Brayden plans on returning to college and pursuing his degree. Brayden was hired as a reserve police officer in August 2022 and was promoted to full-time police officer in December of 2022. In his off time, Brayden is an avid outdoorsman who hunts, fishes, hikes, and participates in all things outdoor. Brayden is joined tonight by his mother, Sherry, father Jonathan, sister Chelsea, brother-in-law Prince, and friends. His mother, Sherry, will be pinning his badge in a few moments. I just want to say that I went to McLean High School. They wouldn't let me join the Marine Corps because I had flat feet. I went to the Tulare Kings Police Academy and also graduated third of my class. I don't know. Maybe this could be you. Just as long as you don't try to boot me out the door too fast. Okay, now I'd like to call up Police Officer Yvonne Reese. Police Officer Yvonne Reese was born and raised in Fresno and attended Central High School East Campus. During high school, Yvonne took AP classes and earned college credits. Upon her graduation from high school, Yvonne made the decision to serve her country and enlisted in the United States Marine Corps where she served honorably for four years. Yvonne was stationed in New Orleans, Louisiana, and Oceanside, California. During her off time while in the Marine Corps, Yvonne volunteered for Habitat for Humanity and fed the homeless through a local church in New Orleans. Yvonne volunteered over 300 hours in the span of a year and a half and in addition to her duties as a Marine. Yvonne also enrolled in college while on active duty where she attended Ashford University and accumulated more college credits. After her military service was concluded in February of 2020, Yvonne moved back to Fresno and opened a boutique with her family. In June 2021, Yvonne enrolled in the post basic academy at Fresno City College. She was involved in a traffic collision and her injury forced her to withdraw from the police academy. In March of last year, we hired Yvonne as a police recruit and she again entered the academy in April. Upon graduating from the academy in October 2022, Yvonne was appointed as a police officer. Yvonne's mother is currently a police officer for the Orange Coat Police Department and her father is an inspector for the United States Department of Agriculture. Yvonne has three siblings, her sister Jessica, who was a former law enforcement dispatcher, her brother Andrew, who is a Marine sergeant, and her sister Ariel, who is a retail manager. And they are with her here today along with her mother's husband, Rob. In her spare time, Yvonne enjoys traveling around the country and has visited at least 15 states, loves Disneyland, and spending time with her dog, Nana. Yvonne has been to Disneyland so many times, she's lost count. She also enjoys training in mixed martial art and earned her green belt, which is number three out of five, number three out of a five-belt ranking while she was serving in the Marine Corps. Yvonne is currently assigned as a patrol officer and is grateful for the opportunity and looks forward to continuing her service with the community and the citizens of Kingsburg. And in a few moments, her badge pinning will be done by her mother, Irma, and her family is here to witness that. So, I'd like to present these officers with their badges and then we'll have the clerk administer the oath. Madam Clerk?
All right. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
State of the name?
Brayden Patavik.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend?
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies?
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic?
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States?
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I'll take this obligation freely?
That I'll take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion.
That I will, well and faithfully?
That I will, well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties?
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter?
Upon which I'm about to enter. Congratulations. Now, I'd like to call Brayden's family up and have them, your mom, pin your badge.
Yes, and come on and take pictures. Come on up.
And we will. What, so I was planning on having Brayden do that and then Yvonne and then we can have some group photos. Oh, come on, come on up. Don't be shy.
Yeah. I think that's a requirement.
This is where you kiss a mom? Okay, all right. Yvonne, come on up front. And then invite your family to come on up and pin your badge. And again, come up, anybody wants to take photos, get closer, feel free to do that. Family members, you guys want to come get a photo? Brayden, Yvonne, come on. Get the whole crowd up there.
You guys want me to take a photo of you?
All right, one, two, three. Can we just take? Oh, I didn't fall.
All right, Yvonne, you guys?
I'm okay.
All right, one more with council.
Yeah, for a party.
All of us are. I'd like to, if you'd like, enjoy some.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Glad you're welcome, Keith.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Glad you're welcome, Keith.
Thank you so much, thank you.
So, thank you once again. We appreciate the time and the opportunity to do this and be before you. It's an honor to do so and present new employees. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Chief, Dadian.
We're going to evacuate.
Time for dinner, huh? Congratulations again.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Okay, then moving on, next on our agenda, we have public comment. This is time for any citizen to come forward and address the city council on any issue within its jurisdiction that is not listed on the agenda. A maximum of five minutes is allowed for each speaker. Do we have anyone here who would like to address our city council on something that is not on our agenda?
You can all move out.
And I'm looking right at San Antonio. Okay, then seeing none, I will close public comment. Next on the agenda is consent calendar. Items considered routine in nature are to be placed on consent calendar. They will be considered in one item and voted upon in one vote unless individual consideration is requested. Each vote in favor of consent calendar is considered and recorded as a separate affirmative vote in favor of each action listed. Approval of the consent calendar items include recital reading ordinances, titles only, and adoption of recommended actions contained in staff reports. Tonight, we have 5.1 through 5.8. Any council member, do we have any council members that would like to pull any consent calendar items? No? If you have anybody from the public who would like to pull a consent calendar item? No? Okay, seeing none, then can I get a motion to approve consent calendar?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Moving on to regular calendar, 6.1. City of Kingsburg Solar Construction Update. Report by SiteLogic. Presentation by Jessica Ritter of SiteLogic.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. So, we're here today both as public work staff and also the SiteLogic team. Just to give a quick update on where we at, so we have issued the notice to proceed to SiteLogic. Today's meeting just happened to kind of coincide with a site visit that we conducted. But with that, I'll pass it over to SiteLogic and like I said, we'll be happy to answer any questions that you guys may have.
Hello again, Mayor, members of the council. We're so happy to be back so soon. I know it is our intent to work very quickly to build this project for you. Like Daniel said, I was here with Nate today. Nate Gustus is your project manager. We were meeting with Daniel, visiting the sites and having just what we call a project kickoff meeting with Public Works Director. But I wanted to bring Nate by, one, to introduce him to you all and to have him give you a quick update. Just so you know, the process going forward will be Nate working directly with Daniel, having monthly meetings and updates. It's kind of slow in the beginning, right? A lot of material procurement, material ordering, finalizing engineering and design, getting permits, going through your building department. And then once all of that is taken care of, then it's break ground and start construction. But I brought Nate here today to answer any questions that you might have and kind of give you an idea further of what the process is going to look like.
Hi, everyone. Nate Gustus, project manager with SiteLogic, really happy to be here. Yeah, as Jessica mentioned, we're just initially starting the project now. Just had a site visit today, did a kickoff meeting with Daniel earlier today. So, just earlier this week, I've become really familiar with the project and now at this point, essentially going to be reaching out to subcontractors, developing and essentially securing our subcontracts moving forward with engineering, which will take several months to complete. But then after that, we're looking at most likely next summer to start construction. So, yeah.
Are there any questions from the council?
Question from council?
Question for Daniel. Regarding the Earlian, what's the timeframe while getting the fence and landscape sort of?
So, we actually were out there today. They were doing some work identifying the locations of some landscape that we need to remove and also evaluating the irrigation system for the new plannings. So, we'll have some plannings there sometime in the middle of next week and then the following spring, we'll have the remaining one in the middle fence, so.
Thank you.
All right, well, if there's no other questions from the council, thanks again for having us here and we look forward to our monthly updates.
I just have a comment for Nate. I'm sure you've heard from Jessica about the park, Earlian Park. Just want to make sure that the specs are met, you know, to what the public, you know, we had a public hearing and stuff and we just want to make sure that we keep those specs as close, you know, to the specs that we approved for the city, yeah.
Right, yeah, no, I did have a conversation with Jessica about that and the way that I'm understanding it is that you do want that shade structure to be fairly low to the ground and would not elevate like past the top of the fence that surrounds the ponding basin, so.
And to not harm the turtles during construction. We were very clear on that.
We don't want to see it. I mean, let's, we don't want to see it.
Yeah.
That's, that was what the public was very clear about. That's the accountability that you're going to be held to is if we have last minute changes to say, ah, you know what, we looked at the soil and the project's off. We're not going to take excuses for changes. What that neighborhood really compromised on and came together with is what we have, we have to meet those specifications. There's not going to be any wiggle room at all. So, we've been real clear with Jessica from the onset and we just want to pass that along with you. We look forward to working with you.
Yeah.
But especially there, you're going to be held very accountable, so it's a fair warning.
Yeah.
Understood.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Jessica, thank you, Nate.
Thank you.
Thanks, Daniel, yeah. Is there any public comments on this agenda item? No, okay, thank you. Then moving on, 6.2. 2024 through 2029 City of Kingsburg Strategic Plan Update. Staff report by Assistant City Manager Christina Windover, presentation by City Manager Alex Henderson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This item this evening continues our discussion and development of the updated strategic plan, which helps prioritize our efforts to achieve a shared vision, mission, and strategic goals that reflect the community's priorities and needs. Council approved the city's vision, mission, and strategic goals for the 2024-2029 strategic plan during our previous meeting on October 18th. The goals are the result or purpose of the strategic plan and they specify what will be accomplished over the five-year period and support the mission and vision. Subsequent to that, staff has developed objectives that will lead to the achievement of the five strategic goals. Each objective is specific, measurable, achievable, relevant, and time-bound, or SMART. So, staff can plan the steps to meet the long-term goals of the strategic plan. The SMART objectives will help staff with accountability and timing and will be the basis for our annual performance measurements, which are included in the budget each year. Slate Communications, which is our subconsultant, is working with staff on the final design aspect for the strategic plan. So, that'll be the final document that we will present to the public and to council. But we are bringing to you this evening the final objectives so that we can incorporate those into the public-facing document. Once completed, again, we will bring that back to the council and then begin sharing with the public. So, our recommendation this evening is to approve the updated strategic plan objectives to the strategic goals. And that concludes my report, but I'm certainly happy to answer any questions that you may have about that document.
Questions from council on this agenda item? No, I think we've all read this and do you have a question? Oh, I'm sorry, Stacy, go ahead.
I just want a few comments.
Comments, yes, yeah.
I really appreciated seeing the goals. It looks like it was exciting to see all the department heads. It feels like everybody's on the same page. You incorporated what we had discussed. And to me, it was, it's really exciting to see it. And along that, I had two comments. I wanted to point out, I wanted to say thank you to Daniel. One of the items on there was the support of festivals, community activities. And being somebody that works very heavily with the Swedish festival, we appreciate all that public work says and we do our best to try not to be too taxing on you guys. But I do appreciate seeing that and I do think we could come together and brainstorm on some ideas that would be beneficial to both of us. But the other comment I had was on under financial stability. The police department was the only one that made any comment about Measure E. I would kind of like to see maybe a few other departments try and incorporate that, at least from my perspective, just we're going to go through the renewal in the next number of years. I just would appreciate seeing the buy-in from all the departments and just recognizing the importance that that, that measure plays for the community. That would be my only other comment. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Stacy. Any other comments or questions from council?
Daniel, one of the things I really am excited about with this is the interactive online map where residents can look and see what's coming up for maintenance and I'm not having any surprises and look at projects. I really liked that, that you added in there.
Question, comments from the public on this agenda item? No? Okay, then recommended action is approve the update strategic plan objectives to the strategic goals. Can I get a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
A second?
I'll second.
Got a first, I got a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries, thank you. Next, we have council reports and staff communications. 7.1, Community Service Commission, we have not met since our last meeting. Public Safety Committee, we meet next month. Oh, no, this month. Yeah, this month sometime, today's the first. Right, we meet this month. 7.3, Chamber of Commerce.
For the chamber, they worked together with the downtown businesses yesterday and I think we had over a thousand kids that trick-or-treated downtown. I don't know if you had a chance to go down there, but it was really an amazing thing to see. There was a woman that was sitting over having coffee outside of the Bella Bakery and she was just in tears and like when she was asked if she was okay, she said she was from Fresno and she'd never seen anything like this in the community. So, it was pretty cool that our businesses and the chamber put all that effort into making this a great place for families. We haven't met, we'll meet again in, not next week, but the week after.
Thank you, Laura. 7.4, Economic Development.
Several things to report tonight. Union 76 Phase 1 plans were approved, so that's the service station that's going to go by the Dollar, Dollar Tree over by T-Mobile. Stone Plaza, as I mentioned last time, residents are moving in. Construction for Toshiko's Japanese restaurant is ongoing and underway downstairs. Bolt Bistro, which is another restaurant that will be opening up down towards Workouts Unlimited, that's going to be healthy, more healthy snacks from what I understand, maybe salads and, and smoothie drinks, those types of things, energy drinks, that type of stuff. So, that'll be an interesting menu when it comes out and something different, so that's exciting. And other than that, that's all I have to report.
Thank you, Dave. 7.5, Finance Committee.
We did meet and went over budget adjustments, which I believe are within this council packet, which we just approved.
Thank you, Brandon. 7.6, Planning Commission, nothing to report. 7.7, South Kings GSA.
Nothing to report.
7.8, Downtown Business Improvement District.
Nothing to report.
7.9, Council of Governments.
We did meet. The big topic that I, we had at this meeting, which we're going to continue to have, is going to be regarding Measure C and its renewal. I think at our level, we are probably going to need to start engaging a little bit more and educating the public on what this is going to mean for our towns. For those that don't know, Measure C is going to be on the ballot again in potentially '24, likely '26. It's a measure that's set to expire in '27. It's a multi-billion dollar project that really helps our roadways. It is looking bad for us if this does not pass with our roadways. There's a lot of funding associated with that. There's a lot of half-completed projects for all towns, but especially for Kingsburg, we have, you know, things that are kind of halfway done along Golden State and Stroud, Cam Bethel, that are going to be in jeopardy if Measure C doesn't pass. And so, I'll be bringing more of these things to council with Measure C as we get closer in time. I'll be bringing more of these things to council with Measure C as we get closer in time. You know, to kind of get your opinion on it and anything that we need to take back, but I do want to educate the citizens on the importance of that for our roadways. It is a sales tax measure, which can be unpopular, but the, there is a lot of need for this throughout the entire county with the roadways. So that was, that was hours of our meeting this last week. I think it's going to continue. Other than that, there is nothing from Council of Governments or FCRT to report.
Thank you, Brandon. 7.10, Council Member Reports. Anybody have anything?
I have a few items.
Okay.
I attended the Fresno Housing Board of Commissioners meeting at the Linnea Villas. They had their meeting there and it was well-attended. There was approximately 15 either board or commissioners there. Very, very nice meeting. They talked about the budget. There is a shortfall in their budget that they're attempting to shore up and restructure and move some things around within their budget. They felt confident that they could do that because they started on the budget process early, so they've been working on how to shore up that shortfall. They have approximately 15, 15-plus projects going on around the county, which are different, they're similar to Linnea Villas, but there's different projects and I brought the literature, if you guys want to see it and drill down on it. It shows all the 18 projects that are around, you know, the county, which are really good projects, so that was a good meeting. On a more community-minded note, I got a chance to go see the KHS Girls Volleyball play on Tuesday night. Amazing, they were down two sets and they came back and won that to advance. And then they won again last night. Didn't get to see that one because we got trick-or-treaters, but they did win last night and so they play again on tomorrow. Tomorrow night is at home against Bullard. And so I believe water polo is playing right now while we speak. Hopefully it's not over because I wanted to jet over there. But water polo is also playing, the women's water polo, so I thought that was great. Got a chance to go to the Kingsburg Rally, you know, the KHS Rally downtown. Daniel did a great job with Public Works and Police and blocking off the street, making it safe for everyone, so I appreciate that. And then yesterday was really festive. If anybody got a chance to come to City, everybody was dressed up in their costumes and it was Toy Story was the, was the theme and it was great. It was super festive and I appreciate everybody, you know, taking the time to dress up and, you know, there were so many kids downtown. It was really a great environment and I appreciated it, so. That's all I had tonight.
Anybody else? I have one thing. On Friday, the 20th of last month, I got a text from, you guys remember Tal Eslick? Tal, he was with, I think Vista Consulting? So he emailed me and said, hey Vince, we want to get a few council members from surrounding cities to tour Pine Flat Dam. So I went on the 20th. It was, it was in the morning. We met in the Kings River, Kings River Water District Building on, I think it's on Jensen. And it was on Jensen. It was myself, the mayor from Parlier, council member from Clovis, the council member from Sanger, Hurtado, and then staff member from Biola. So us five went. The council member from Clovis, I'm having a brain, he was our former chief of police for a couple of months. Besseger, thank you, yeah. True character. I mean, he and I had a couple of laughs together anyways. And the reason, the reason they were doing it is because so it was, it was nice. We had a breakfast. They fed us breakfast, then we drove up to the dam. You know, talked to some of the Army Corps Engineer guys there and then we drove up to the dam, got to tour. We didn't get to go, we didn't get to go in the dam because the elevator was having issues and they were afraid we might get stuck. But we got to be up, be on top of the dam and walk around and look and stuff and get a little information on, you know, when it was built and there were some pictures inside there in the office and the dam and the dam and stuff. Anyways, the reason that the Kings River, I mean, the, yeah, Kings River Water District wants to do this is they are concerned about water rights. So they're going to be doing this about once a month or they're going to be inviting, I guess, some other cities and council members. Because they said they might need our help in the future with the state legislators on water rights, so. You know, they're just trying to, you know, trying to, trying to get us to, info to us about what could be coming down the road, you know, in the future, so. It was very interesting, so I just wanted to bring that up. Next, we have 711, City Managers Report.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, just a couple of quick updates on some projects either underway or will be shortly. The Mattson Avenue Road Reconstruction Project that's from Stroud to Cam should be taking place in December, so that project has been awarded. Or should be completed. They're going to do a lot of the work in November, should be completed by December. The sidewalk work for both 12th Avenue and 18th Avenue is currently underway. If you've been in those areas, that project is underway right now, should be completed by the end of the year. The Rapid Flashing Beacon Project on 201 is currently out to bid, so a couple of meetings ago, we got the permit and finally got the go-ahead from Caltrans to put that out to bid, so that's currently out to bid. That includes some sidewalk work along 201 as well as the installation of those safety improvements at four different locations on 201. So I would expect to see some of that work beginning in December as well. If you've been on Golden State Boulevard, just sort of echoing Councilmember Purcell's comments, you've probably noticed that there's new road everywhere except for basically all the intersections that conflict with the railroad. So that has been a challenge throughout the entire corridor. We do think that there's a path forward. Hopefully, that may involve us taking, taking responsibility, not taking on monetary responsibility, but essentially taking on responsibility, so we'll probably be bringing back more of that information for council to discuss as we work through those issues with the railroad and with FC TA. And then finally, I'll be sending out an invite that came from Senator Hurtado's office. They're holding a water roundtable in Tulare next Thursday, and so they've invited, they just got an invitation. They're inviting elected officials to that as well, so. That's all that I have.
Thank you, Alex. Next future agenda items, we have none. Moving on, we're going to adjourn our regular Kingsburg City Council meeting into closed session. 9.1, Conference with Legal Counsel Anticipate Litigation. 9.2, Public Employment, California Government Code Section 54957. Thank you, Chief, for coming. So we can go to